Yeah.
All right, we're ready. You guys ready? All right. Good afternoon. This is the Wednesday, June twenty third, two thousand and twenty one Town Council Scarborough Maine Town Council Workshop on the Downs Traffic Improvements and the Traffic Movement Permit. Real quick, we will do a quick roll call. Tom?
I'm sorry.
Councilor Gleistin.
Councilor Clucci.
Here.
Councilor Katerina.
Here.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Councilor Anderson.
Councilor Hamel.
Here.
And Chairman Johnson.
Yes, it's listed as an item. I had to do it. Okay, item number three is essentially our only item. It's broken into four subcategories. Number one is the overview of the traffic movement permit process. Jay, I think you're gonna get us started. Is that correct? I have a PowerPoint you and.
Yep. I think eight or ten slides are from the Downs team and then we follow with six or eight slides. If you've done season there, well, I'll skip over.
Chairman Johnson, I'd kick it off if it's all right with you.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me. Yeah. Do you want to start with a PowerPoint or?
We'd like to, yeah.
Absolutely. Just let me try to put.
But before I'm gonna pass out some graphics that help the council with this.
Thank you. Yeah, you better be.
So to get started, first of all, thank you, all of you members of the town council and the staff that are here tonight. We're pretty excited to get a chance to talk about traffic in the Downs and update the council on where we're at. We have Peter Mishu, Dan Bacon, and Tom Erico. Tom is our traffic consultant from TY Lynn here tonight. And hopefully, we can answer questions. We do have a presentation and then I think certainly there'll be some discussion. Starting out, what you're seeing on the screen, you've seen before, but it's it shows our site, the down site, in its proximity to terrific, you know, major road network. And it's one of the things that really helps us with the Downs and will enable it to be developed out. The circles that you see are walk rings, five-minute walk rings. And it's again, it's a slide you've seen probably several times over the last few years. But we thought it was helpful to just kind of orient everybody and, you know, give you an idea of where we are with a terrific major road roadway network. Who's advancing the slides?
I am.
There you go. So we've been working with our consultants, with the town staff and their consultants, the state of Maine, for about two years on this traffic movement permit. We're really excited to be, you know, at the at the finish line with getting a permit approved. And it's it's been quite a process. There's been a lot of work involved by all of the parties. Lots of intersections looked at and studied, and a lot, a lot has gone into this. The Downs, as we've we've said in the beginning, the Downs really can be a catalyst for looking at and taking care of a lot of these traffic issues and figuring out how best to move traffic through town. And part of the reason that that we're going to be able to make a lot of improvements here is because of the Downs and the Downs moving forward. So the traffic movement permit is it's a TMP, just for the audience. When we say TMP, we mean traffic movement permit. It's required by the main DOT for new developments at the Downs, simply because of the size of the development and the number of trips that will be occurring over time. TMP mitigation includes town impact fees, town direct responsibilities, existing issues, project, our project impacts, and longstanding town main DOT transportation corridor initiatives. So dovetailing those all together. The TMP is unprecedented in its opportunity for comprehensive townwide transportation improvements performed by the project, by the Downs, with local taxpayer, with without local taxpayer funding or or debt. So there's a lot of work that's going to get done with the Downs really driving the bus on actually getting the work done. It's it's a, you know, it's a unified effort, obviously, but the Downs is ultimately responsible to get the work done. Project enables a three-year main DOT business partnership initiative. That's the BPI funding that we talk about. Because of the size of this project, the state will actually participate and will get, you know, will get money from the state on on making improvements. So that's a that's a that's a big deal, you know, for the citizens of the town to be able to get work done, not on their on their dime. Total transportation program looks like around fourteen million. You've seen a few different numbers, thirteen, fourteen million. That's that's today. By the time everything's done, I'm sure there'll be will be creep on that, but around fourteen million. The main DOT BPI share would be three million of that. We're looking for the town to participate in about two point eight million, and that money is impact fees that the town has collected from other development. It's not taxpayer money. And then the project's share right now is looking at about eight point two million dollars that that would cost the Downs Development Team. Our key next step is to proceed with the improvement plan. The town council, we need to get a memorandum of agreement with the town council so that we can move forward and know that these monies are set aside. So Dan is gonna do a presentation and take you through some specifics. It's it's a little bit high level and we can then we can drill down and get into more detail if you want to after the presentation's made, but Dan's gonna take it from here.
Thank you, and it's nice to be here in person. It's been a year and a half of Zoom, so it's great to be in behind a podium and in the meeting room with you. So thanks for all for advancing this slide. Before I dive into the TMP kind of improvements and mitigation, I thought it was first important to talk a little bit about our design principles with the project. Jay and Angela know this stuff the planning board does, but I know you're not as immersed in kind of the layout of the project. So even before the TMP, we focused really hard on laying out the project in a manner that really focuses on highway access. So the project isn't impacting the road system as much as it otherwise would. So to that end, we've located, you can see the Downs, the yellow outline or circle is exit forty-two and I ninety-five. And then the two red circles are our primary entrances, really for like the light industrial, commercial, the heavier traffic to go into and outside the project. Those driveways or new roadway intersections are located as close as possible within the site to exit forty-two. So that was deliberate to promote highway use and easy in and out for a lot of the regional traffic that wants to visit the Downs, particularly commercial, light industrial traffic. Thought that was important for the council to understand. We've also laid out the project internally to really kind of play to those access points and to actually downplay the use of Route One. Route One, everybody thinks of as like the Downs main entrance. When the project evolves further, it's really going to be the quieter entrance. It's more the residential side of the project. Again, so that more of the regional traffic goes to Higas Parkway into Payne Road. Higas Parkway is built by main DOT to carry traffic. And we're utilizing that with our design. Another key piece in the project is the internal layout. It's a complete street project, so it's very walkable, bikeable. So that benefits the project in terms of minimizing traffic within the project and also external to the project. The mixed-use piece of the Downs is also really key. Rather than a lot of things happening along Route One, there's the opportunity for people to come to the site for multiple things or not necessarily leave the site because you may live there, you may work there, you may go there to work, and then you may go to dinner after. You're not necessarily using the external road system. So the design of the project and how it's set up is really on its own, helps minimize traffic impacts. And then lastly, really kind of the layout and the density within the project provides a great opportunity for transit to be more commonly used in Scarborough. So Scarborough historically has grown in a way that that isn't really transit friendly, this project is. And so part of our mitigation you'll see actually is going to be helping induce transit in Scarborough to for the project, but also for the community in general. So I wanted to touch on those things. In terms of the overall approach to the TMP, it's it's a comprehensive approach, and it's not piecemeal. Typically, traffic movement permits developments come in and apply for traffic movement permit when they know the end user that's going in. It's sort of just based on what's proposed at that time. Working with the town and DOT, we approached this differently where it's a long-term traffic permit. So we actually applied for approval for 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 trips based on our five-year forecast of future development, not kind of reacting to tomorrow or the next day. So this isn't typically done with DOT. It led to, as Rocky said, sort of a long permitting process, but it's one long permitting process that can that can serve us in the town the next five to ten years versus always applying once we know, hey, there's this end user, I'm gonna apply for a permit. So it's a bit unheard of, but we think it's served the project well and will serve the town well. So we're accommodating through this TMP, the build-out, the future build-out over the next five or greater year period. So that was important for the council to kind of understand. And the mitigation that we're doing, that we'll talk briefly, we'll talk about in a few minutes, is all going to be done in the first year, but excuse me, in the first five years, but really focused on the first three years. So the majority of the improvements we're going to start making in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. And that will be before most of the substantial impacts of traffic of the project. So that'll happen upfront versus kind of reacting to traffic as the project builds out. As Rocky indicated, this TMP includes mitigation that really historically has been expected that the town would execute in many of these impact fee districts where there hasn't been adequate money quite yet built up to execute those. So instead, the Downs would partner with the town in executing those. It's also gonna execute mitigation that are really the project's impact and responsibilities. And then working with DOT in the town, the mitigation is really earmarked for some of those longstanding kind of corridor initiatives that that the town and DOT, you know, haven't tackled. And the project like of this size has the ability to, working with DOT in the town. It's also a pretty modern approach to transportation. We're not just proposing to widen streets that then just get filled up with cars. It's sort of strategic improvements for capacity, but also strategic improvements for bike and ped use and transit. And most notably, strategic in terms of the corridor improvements that we're working with the town and DOT on relating to signal signals, like optimizing the signal system on all the key corridors in town so that traffic's efficient and and responsive to kind of the cars on the street. So that's a real key piece of this proposal or this TMP. And so kind of lastly, in the point of this evening, is kind of leading up to the partnership, you know, to to execute this bundle of improvements. It's critical to have the three-way partnership with the Downs kind of carrying the majority of the cost, but also DOT's BPI funding, and then the town's impact fee funding that hasn't been used yet on this corridors that it's earmarked for. So thanks, Paul. This is a map that's really hard to read. But what it's identifying is all the locations where improvements will be made. So with this TMP and transportation program, at least thirty intersections will be improved. Some in substantial ways, some in in more minor ways. That's what all the kind of the dots represent. And it really will impact and better the key corridors in the community that everybody thinks of. The Route One corridor, the Payne Road corridor, including South Portland. So the Payne Road corridor, as everybody knows, turns into Main Mall Road. And it's it's one regional corridor, not just, you know, a jurisdictional corridor. So we're making improvements, working with both agencies along that entire corridor, all the way up to the Best Buy entrance or the main mall entrance on Main Mall Road. We're also working on signals at Eight Corners, Higas Parkway improvements, and then even out into North Scarborough. So one of the bigger congestion problems in town is the one fourteen twenty-two overlap. The project really actually doesn't impact that area substantially, but it's a high need. So the project through this TMP process is going to be working with both agencies on improvements out there, which may actually benefit, you know, Corum, Westbrook, other communities in a way as much as Scarborough. So in terms of some some more specifics, the the map outlined those thirty-plus areas. As I mentioned, there's a range of different types of improvements. So there's the auto-focused capacity improvements. That's like more traditional, improve the signal, the intersection, add new signals, add turn lanes. So that's being done at what we call the Downs front doors. So the Payne Road intersection with the Downs, Route One intersection with Scarborough Downs Road, a new Higas Parkway intersection that will the Downs will will establish. So those are kind of the front door improvements that are more customary with development. We're also making significant improvements at exit forty-two Payne Road and Higas Parkway, that key intersection at the interchange. The Payne Road corridor will see pretty significant capacity improvements, so from exit forty-two to the Downs, but also down past Payne and Muzzy Road. Payne and Muzzy Road's been historically a high-crash location, a challenging intersection. So that'll see significant improvements. There'll be a new signal there based on DOT requirements. That's been kind of a longstanding thing that hasn't been done by the town through its impact fees. And then also a key connection from Higas Parkway into the downtown. Last night, we had a meeting about the downtown, and that access point is kind of key for the town, key for the project to activate that area. The next is these corridor improvements around signals and efficiency and safety. So I mentioned those corridors. I don't need to kind of mention them again, but there's, you know, twenty-five some odd intersections that will get entirely adaptive signals, new signal hardware, controllers, and other associated improvements that'll make those quarters run a lot smoother. If you have more technical questions, Tom can Tom can get into those. But but I know that's a huge component to this this TMP and this partnership. Coupled with that, Oakell, Oakell's the busiest intersection in town. And there's so signal improvements will be made there, safety improvements will be made there, access management improvements will be made there. So that's that intersection will be improved and will implement many of the things the town's been studying for a number of years and hasn't had the the funding entirely to to execute those. So that'll be accomplished in the second year of this three-year plan. So that would be in twenty-three. We're also paying safety impact fees for other intersections and locations that we're not making improvements, that DOT then collects and then works with the town on executing. And the last two key kind of buckets are pedestrian connections. So not only making the Downs walkable, but making access and pedestrian accommodations walkable around it. So Route One will have new sidewalks on both sides of the project. We're going to provide a key connection over to the municipal campus, which is really desirable to get where we are here, connected with the Downs more directly for walkers and bikers. And then a key connection up to Cabela's, working with the Beacon. I know you're working with the Beacon right now on an application, so that's kind of a key partnership to make that linkage happen. And then lastly, transit. So we're already funding or helping fund Zoom, serve the projects. So Phase One already has transit service. We put in a bus shelter and we've we're actually paying a fee every year so that they serve the Downs. We want to build on that. So to continue that relationship and grow transit, we're partnering on funding a study to really figure out how transit can be grown to the Downs, to Oakell, to Scarborough, where riders are coming from, where they want to go, so that we can work with the transit agencies and the town can work with the transit agencies to really make a robust transit system with the project and to serve this area. And so with that, as that happens, we'll make additional transit stops near and within the project. That's part of the the program. So I guess just to kind of wrap up, from a key program element standpoint, and Rocky will have a couple of final remarks. All of the town DOT partnership improvements, they're all going to happen in the next three years. So we have five years to do all of the things in the TMP, but the majority are in the next three years. And all of the ones that the impact fees a partner and the BPI is a partner happen in the next three years, twenty-two through twenty-four. All those improvements also are geared to happen before there's kind of substantive impacts from the project. I mean, so far, we've had light industrial and residential uses. We have signalized intersections that already can accommodate those. As development occurs, we're going to be doing the improvements before, you know, bigger impacts happen. As Rocky mentioned earlier, it's really key to understand, for the public to understand, that these improvements are funded by the project. They're also would be through the impact fee system funded by past development projects or future where they pay to feed the town. So and those fees, you know, need to go to those specific improvements. They're not for other activities. And then, of course, the three million dollars from DOT through the the partnership. The TMP includes, I guess I lost my place. It's okay. Yeah, that's good. I just wanted to repeat sort of the five-year forecast. So the TMP includes enough kind of traffic and accommodation and solves the impacts for our forecasted build-out over the next five years. One key component of that is we need to do these improvements every year regardless of pace of development. So if nothing happens, we have to do them. If a fair amount happens, we have to do them. So having predictability in terms of how we build out, you know, both residentially and commercially, is really important to kind of marry up with funding the project. Because if the project can't proceed at a, you know, sort of forecasted pace, then there isn't the the private dollars to to fund those improvements. So there's a linkage between kind of build out of the project and actually making these large improvements. Guess the other key piece is like, okay, how do we keep track? Like, how do we know you're still within your permit or, you know, how much traffic is being generated? We've been working with with Jay and Angela, their team already on like a scorecard. So as a project comes in, reviewed by the planning board, they keep track. Okay, they use ten trips. They use twenty trips. So that we can't go past what we're approved for, you know, without working with DOT in the town. So it's closely monitored in terms of the traffic that is added to the system and us complying with the permits. I wanted the council to be aware of that, too. It's not a willy-nilly thing. And if we, as we approach, okay, your, you know, your trips are are satisfied or used up with the TMP, we have to apply to DOT, you know, should we ever get to that point, say, five, six, seven years for modification? And then that's then they look at new impacts. So I just wanted the council to be aware, there's a good tracking system in place in terms of compliance. So with that, hopefully, that gives you a good sense of the program, what's included, sort of the importance of the the partnership, and and I'll let you, Rocky, kind of wrap up and go from there.
Thanks, Dan. Go to the next one, Paul. One, two, Paul. The trips. Number of trips. About three thousand. So, you know, this this program really allows all of the goals of all three parties to get executed, you know, the Downs, the town, and the DOT. Again, it's about a fourteen million dollar dollar amount for the for everything that we're talking about doing. It gets the main DOT to commit to a three million dollar put in towards it, about a million bucks a year. They'll do a million a year over three years. That's their BPI program. That's that's a big deal for the citizens of the town of Scarborough to get three million dollars from the state and to get the benefit of that. The town, we need the town to, you know, commit those impact fees to to allow us to to make these make these improvements in those various districts. And that's really our ask of the council tonight. You knew there had to be an ask when we when we came to talk about this. But basically, it's a pretty should be a pretty easy lift, I would think, that these are monies that have been collected over time from developers for improvements. And we'll take that money, put it together with ours and and the state, and and we can really make some really big improvements. So we're funding the rest of the of the balance on that. We need an MOU. We've got to have an understanding in writing so that we can move forward. It's pretty important to to have that in writing so that we all know who's doing what and how we move forward, move this project forward. But it's a it's pretty exciting. I don't know that there are a lot of towns around in in Maine that have the opportunity to really, really look at traffic and really make serious improvements and not cost the the citizens any money. So with that, I think Jay's got some slides that he wants to do.
Yeah, we're gonna we'll hold off questions until Jay's done, and then we'll take it from there.
So you can actually just skip right to the next slide there. So, you know, as we talked about this, as I talked about the workshop with Tom, what we thought would be helpful is this. We knowing that the request of council is to really take a a look at our traffic impact fees is just do a broad overview of what our traffic impact fees are. So sort of just, you know, real briefly, the purpose of of traffic impact fees is really to address traffic deficiencies in town. And so the states establish this tool for towns to use whereby we can impose impact fees on new developments. Those fees are paid by the developer based on their impacts, you know, are sort of calculated through different design programming. And then those funds are put into reserve accounts for specific improvements. As was already just sort of talked about, you know, the Downs is of a different size and magnitude than anything that was contemplated when our impact fees went in. That in the early discussions with the DOT, you know, there is pretty clear that mitigation, actual construction by the Downs team was going to be required in that. actual construction by the Downs team was going to be required and that just payment to the impact fees wasn't going to be sufficient. So next slide, just give you a brief overview of where these impact fees are. We really have four different areas that we collect from. So you can see three of them are right along the Route One corridor, one's at Oak Hill. The next one is Hy- Hygus Parkway, Route One intersection, and then further on down at the Dun- Dunston Corner. And then the fourth is the Payne Road impact fee area. And I actually break that one down a little bit further in a few slides. But the next slide, so I'm just going to bang out two of these real quick. Dunston and Hygus Parkway, those improvements have been done. Really what we're collecting the fees for now are going back to pay the town's debt service. The Downs does have a little bit of mitigation they need to do at the Hygus, but by and large, their, their impacts are being mitigated by paying back the town for the improvements that are already done. So we can go to the next slide. And this is where the partnerships really starts to come to fruition here. So I mentioned I was going to go over the Payne Road district. So there, there are four current districts. There used to be five. Sorry, Tom, I didn't get to color code this map. I didn't, I ran out of time this afternoon. But you can see the fi- the, the four existing districts, District One is really up there at the South Portland line, really runs from South Portland line to about the two ninety-five overpass. District Two, two ninety-five, to just about past Gorham Road. District Three, Gorham Road, down to essentially the Holmes Downs intersection. And then I'll skip to District Five, which runs us west of the Turnpike up through North Scarborough. District Four, as you can see on there, was really, was around the Eight Corners intersection area. And that was repealed in twenty-eleven because the town actually activated the impact fee funds and was able to complete the project that was contemplated. We haven't yet been able to do that in these other five districts, and that's why they're still active after thirty years. Typically, you don't have traffic impact fees for thirty years, but here we are. And this is an opportunity for the town to, to make some actions that we haven't been able to in the past. If you go to the next slide, see what I, okay, get in. So we've already touched on a number of these things, that the Downs is going to be required to make improvements and that this is an opportunity to leverage the existing town reserve fund. So you can see what those fund numbers are here. I do just want to point out for District Five, again, that was the one that runs from the Turnpike out to North Scarborough. And really, as we talked about, that overlap of, of one fourteen and twenty-two is major problem area. There's a current nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar C I P that was in the F Y twenty calendar year. Construction is planned for that in twenty twenty-three. And this has been really part of that collaboration that we've talked about. Actually, I'll talk about in a couple of slides. So that, though it talks about there being one point two million, just remember that includes the nine hundred thousand that is already accounted for. So really, as you can see at the bottom bullet there, the ask is really going to be to commit roughly one point five million or so of the, from the reserve accounts when you, when you total them up. So the next slide, just briefly on Oak Hill. Again, the, the current account sits at, I'll say four hundred and, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly. Again, that includes the C I P that was actually just improved as part of this budget cycle for adaptive traffic signals. So, you know, there's roughly ninety-six thousand dollars that are unaccounted for, if you will, in, in that. So that'll be part of the, part of the discussion. Yes, done.
So Jay, are those the traffic, adaptive traffic devices similar to the ones that were installed in Dunston?
Correct. Yep. So last slide, really just to sort of touch on, you know, we've already heard some of the benefits really about leveraging our existing reserve accounts to make these longstanding improvements. There's actually been sort of past projects that have put forward by the town that haven't been able to, to occur in some of these districts just due to the lack of funding. So this is an opportunity to, to maximize there. Other things that we found that, that this, you know, partnership has enabled is really to minimize disruption, traffic disruption due to construction sequencing. I was referencing the North Scarborough project, really looking, trying, you know, we've been looking at the five-year program that the D O T has been putting together in terms of what the off-site improvements are going to be. And sort of the three parties have talked about what's the right timing in sequencing of those things so that we don't go in and do a project. And then another year later, they come in and do a project. And now we've messed up North Scarborough for two seasons instead of just one season. Talked about leveraging D O T funding. The other thing that we started to collaborate a little bit on is there are opportunities for efficiencies in project administration, you know? And so I think there's ways that, that that will help sort of all parties. And then my last bullet here is really to foreshadow beyond the M O U a- and, and other things. But this is an opportunity for the town. I talked about the, the Payne Road ordinance being thirty years old. Really, we can take, have an opportunity, once we make these improvements, to take a, a bit of a step back and look at, okay, you know, where, where are other areas in town that we have problems? What type of modern design and cost analysis should we have for those? And really, you know, might lend to us in the next year or over the next year or, or so, looking at updating those ordinances as really a key component to our growth management. So I just wanted to sort of foreshadow that because I think that is something that will be coming down the road to you. But again, tonight, I know we're here to talk about sort of the, a little, little closer in. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Jay. Much appreciated. Peter, do we have an electric copy of this? If so, can we, to distribute it publicly or, because it's just very easy to digest or? With that, I think we'll just, if the council wants the floor, you can keep the floor until your thread is over, so to speak. Councilor Ketterina?
Well, I have a few questions. I live, as you know, on Gorham Road, so I'm in that Payne Road district. And I've noted a couple of things. I noted on this map here down below, it says additional mitigation. And it says Gorham Laurel Ridge to New Road, twenty-five thousand eight hundred and nine. So I'm curious what that is. This is in this box down here. I'm looking at the small print.
Well, that's one of the D O T safety impact fees we're talking about.
I know, but is that money that's going to be expended?
It's going to go to D O T. And I think they kind of collect, kind of like we do our multimodal, they collect throughout the state and use for site, safety improvements.
So they're, they're planning on, no, they aren't planning to do anything between Laurel and New Road. They should.
They should, and they know that it's an issue. And then they prioritize them throughout the state. And as they get to it, they get to it, I think, is kind of how that works.
And the reason I asked that is because obviously we have the Red Brook watershed right there. Particularly, it's right next to the road in that area. So, you know, I was just curious about that. And then, and I kind of chuckled, Jay, when you're talking about, oh, you know, D O T, we don't want to be doing something and then D O T and wants to mess it all up a year later. Is anyone talking to Main Turnpike about the bypass? So, because that's coming up through, and it's my understanding that they've secured almost all of the land that they need. So.
Yeah, Tom, I, we, Tom and I recently had a meeting with D O T and, I mean, I'm sorry, M T A. And so the timing on that project's still unclear to us, but it is coming. It sounds like it's coming anyway.
I've been hearing that for thirty.
That's sort of why I'm, that's why you hear the hesitation in my voice is the conversations are happening. It sounds like there's activity, but I've heard from you, G Marie, and others out in North Scarborough, when we've had the meetings in the past years that, oh, we've been hearing that for thirty years. It sounds to me as though things are moving.
Yes, that's, that's what I've been told.
But, so I, but I don't want to give false hope either because it's not our project.
Right, but my, my question is, I'm sorry to interrupt, but my question is just so you don't have to. My question is, has anyone included M T A and made sure that they aren't then going to come through and say, oh, well, you know that traffic pattern, that's going because we're doing this, that, or the other thing?
So I guess I was just going to offer that, that's where I sort of head is, M T A has, has been aware of this process. And D O T invites them to the meetings. They've been at at least one or two of the meetings in this process. So they are aware of what's happening.
All right. Those are my curious questions.
And I will say that the, the mitigation, where we were looking at North Scarborough in the planning of that was really about optimizing what's there rather than expanding the lanes, knowing that we're, we're hoping that the bypass is coming so that, really making it as efficient as possible without blowing out into a six-lane highway, right?
Well, right, because I, I know at one point they were talking about making Gorham Road into a four-lane road. And I'm like, I don't think so.
So really looking at, we really honed in the design to look at the footprint that's there and just really maximizing the efficiency through the signals and the system. And that's where the down comes in too, with a couple of those legs and adaptive traffic signals as well out there. So that'll be key.
Okay.
And certainly been a message that's been related to the M T A is that the desire for having the, you know, if this were to go through, that it's not going to change the character of North Scarborough.
Councilor Johnson's floor?
Yeah, that was a lot of numbers. He, it was a great overview. Do we, are we going to get a copy of that? Because I don't see that in the packet.
Yeah, it was just, it was emailed to me while we were in executive session.
Because I'm going to have to go back and read that and digest that. But I, I got hung up on something. The, the partnership, was this always a partnership or is that what this ask is for the partnership to absorb our traffic impact fees?
I think it's always been assumed that the town was going to use those impact fees to make improvements. And I think the issue has always been that they didn't really have enough money to go make a big impact. They've been collecting some money. They get a little bit of money. But so our assumption has always been that the town was going to do something. We know we have to do something. Let's work together, put our money together and really make some serious improvements. When through this process, my take on it is the D O T stepped up and said, we have a program that we can assist with some of this stuff because we know there are these ongoing problems that have been in town for a number of years. And we'd like to help fix those. So.
So they're contributing like three million or something like that.
They're willing to contribute. They have a program where they can contribute a million, a million a year for three years.
The B P I part is the platform that puts all three entities together. Is the, that's the partnership.
And again, I'm, I'm dense at times, so I'm just trying to understand. I, I.
D O T comes up, I know. Careful.
You just got set up.
I just got set up.
So the overall cost of these impacts, that eleven to thirteen million dollars, where does that come from? Where, does that come from D O T or is that the assessment of all the?
So that dollar amount is our best guess at this point in time of what we think it will cost when, when it gets done. So the doll, where the dollars come from, we know that the town has somewhere around a couple of million. I'm not, we'll, we'll have to figure that out that they've collected from developers that could go towards these, these improvements. The state has said, we'll go three million. We've got to pick up the tab on the rest.
Okay. And, and again, just trying to wrap my head around it. So if you didn't absorb our impact fees, then you would still be responsible for the difference. Is that correct?
We would be responsible for certain, for certain improvements, but we aren't responsible to make the improvements that the town should have made.
You want it back? I get that. Yeah.
No, we're going to pay twice just to cut to the chase. I don't want to get set up or anything.
No, and, and again, I, I just got hung up on it because, so and I don't know if this is the place to have the discussion. I heard this was the ask of the council. So in the discussions between our, our engineers and our planning, where does the, the directive of what monies are allocated to what projects? Who's responsible for that? Again, giving up two million dollars theoretically in impact fees that we had complete control over. And I'm sure we have a plan in the planning and through engineering over time that we were going to do, you know, improve sidewalks and crosswalks and lighting systems. But if we go into a pool of money like this on a bigger project, who then is, who, who directs where the money goes?
Well, the, the law requires that impact fees are specific to certain improvements. And so impact fees vary in terms of their per-trip cost. And that's based on the type of improvement required and the cost of that improvement. It's all boiled down to a per-trip fee that's assessed.
Right.
So it's very granular in that regard. So we call it an assumption or an ask. The law requires that we use those funds for the intended purpose for which we collected them. We have no.
Yep. But I mean, we could have, in the plan, could have had a, a plan to expand the sidewalks somewhere. Okay, that could have been our plan. Hypothetical. And now we relinquish that. Is that correct?
But you're talking in the hypothetical. We don't, let's say we don't have that because we don't.
That's why I asked.
What we're doing is in accordance with what we've been collecting the funds for. The reason we haven't put them to use to date is either we haven't had enough or the timing hasn't been right. And this really gives us a chance to leverage other resources to, to do bigger projects, including what we're committed to do already. So this isn't just an ask from them. This is a recommendation from staff as well. And D O T frankly says, town, you've been sitting on this money for thirty years. In some cases, you need to put it into play. Right. So I think we're on borrowed time, to be honest, if I can be frank with you. I, I really think this is the time for us to use it and an opportunity for us to really get smarter about what the next evolution of impact fees are in this town.
Jay, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted, in, in, what I was hearing in the question, and forgive me if this wasn't part of it, but just to be clear, within the traffic movement permit, it lays out what the, the, what the improvements are. And there's actual conceptual plans. So a good example, if we talk about Payne Road District Three, there's some six hundred thousand. Let's just, that's one of our bigger ones, bigger nut. What, what, what the ask is, what the requirement is, I'll start there, the Downs, is to rebuild the Muzzy and Payne Road intersection. Put in signals, potentially traffic islands, and there's some concept plans around that stuff.
Something we wanted to do.
Which is something we want to do anyway. That project probably costs a million and a half. I, I don't know. Again, we have six hundred thousand. So it, that, that's sort of the partnership piece. So what I was hearing, one of the questions was, well, how do we know what the improvements are? The improvements are spelled out, what year, and there's conceptual designs that show what's to be built.
Thanks. I, I wanted to follow up on a couple of questions that Councilor Johnson asked. And this is great that we're getting this kind of all, you know, in one place. And we're kind of seeing, a lot of this work has been, been done already. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of yammering about permits and growth management ordinance and that sort of thing. And I think when, sometimes when we're involved in work like that, we forget the fact that there's been this huge body of work that's been going that we were seeing for the first time. So thanks to everybody for bringing that forward and getting it on the board. I, I think that Councilor Johnson's and G Marie have done a good job of saying, so, so now what are our next steps? So I, I know we, this is supposed to be the tee-off, a shot here for the, for the M O U. So I, I was wondering if we could just talk about that for a minute in terms of what, what we expect that would include and how specific can we get? So I know we floated some broad numbers around, but it would be maybe helpful to hear from Tom and that and others.
Again, no one's put pen to paper. I've not seen a draft of the M O U. But in my, my expectation is, essentially what's going to happen is within days or a couple of weeks, the Downs team is going to have to sign their T M P, which effectively legally and financially commits them to all those improvements. Understandably, there's other partners that have been part of this conversation and are part of the solution. And so for their comfort, they need the assurance before they, I'm not sure if they can do it, before they commit, that the partners will set up, play and do what they, you know, they say. So I think an M O U is the right instrument to kind of lay out the, the expectations of parties. I'm not a lawyer, but I think I can say safely that M O U is not a contract. But I think it does, particularly when you're involving two state entities, two public entities, state and town, that we are mutually laying out our expectations, our commitments. There's a next level of effort required for council to actually authorize those funds. And I've begun the conversation with our coines chair as to what that is. I don't think it needs, it can be in the M O U, but at some point, the council will actually have to act to authorize the use of those funds. I don't think it needs, it can be in the MOU, but at some point the council will actually have to act to authorize the use of those funds. So I do anticipate subsequent actions of council will be very specific. But we need an MOU to kind of hold this thing together so everyone has a clear understanding and data.
Thanks, Tom. I had two other questions, ones to follow up to that. So if you were to. Point us in the direction of where the one to three million is right now in our budget, now where will we look for that? Would it be in a reserve fund?
Yeah, they're in separate reserve funds.
Balance or what would it be?
They're in separate reserve funds. They would actually show in the audit in, I think, one of the restricted categories of our fund balance. So it's reported as part of that, but yes, it's separate and apart. On occasion, you'll see them come through the CIP process like North Scarborough, like Oak Hill most recently this year. But they sit separately reserved in the reserve account and, and that's because they are limited in terms of what their use is. We cannot use them for general fund purposes.
Right.
Offside of the cost.
Thank you. And the last question, maybe this is above the rim for us, certainly is for me, but. Any stimulus money for this or any infrastructure money? I don't know where the status of that is federally, but this does seem to be something that would. Would be logical to ask that question.
Yeah, based on my analysis so far with guidance provided by Treasury regarding the ARPA funds, those are really focused on water sewer and broadband exclusively. Having said that, there is a fairly large infrastructure bill apparently making its way through Congress. You know, I, I don't know how, how that may affect. It's quite, quite likely that it could benefit one or more of these projects.
Right. Great. Thanks. Thanks, Tom. Council Anderson, floor is yours.
So I just have a question.
Just make sure your mic's on, John.
Because the, the numbers, I was just trying to follow. So the ask is for, for two point eight. And then I thought, what I understood, Jay, from what you presented, we have about one point five million in reserves. And that would be what we would be putting in the MOU from one of the slides you shared.
I, I think the downs is including the project that was approved.
We've already authorized.
That we already authorized. So I think that they're including, sorry, I'm interrupting, but just because I had the same question. Two years ago, we improved. Yes. So they're lumping that in. So I think in our brain, we're looking at one point.
And this year we approved, what, three hundred and sixty-five for.
Yeah, so it's when you.
Yes.
So if I could jump in, so, you know, take that project that's already been proved and they know what they're, they're doing. Well, we'll look at that. Our team will look at that together and say, well. They're going to do this much. We ought to do this much too. We can put that together and maybe that's a town from Scarborough project that we don't, we just pay. We don't actually do it. Maybe the town does it. We don't know. I haven't figured that all out yet. That's what, that's kind of the ask. We're not asking for two point eight million dollars. We're asking for you to authorize your staff to work with us to come up with a memorandum, understanding of who's going to do what and how, how it should flow.
It's essentially the balance of the reserve accounts for the four Payne Road districts and Oak Hill. Accepting what's already been authorized and appropriated by council.
And so there are no other major transportation projects where we could be using these funds that are in the CIP or.
So, so as was talked about earlier, really we're restricted into where these funds can be expended. They can only be expended in those areas. So. This is, as I sort of said, this sort of sets up our next opportunity to start looking at, okay, where are other challenges in town that are, you know. You know, each, each incremental development sort of has, you know, adds to the problem and maybe we can come up with a design that really aims to solve that. And maybe address our ordinances towards those problems where we've corrected things that have been pending for a while.
I'd add just one kind of point. And when DOT identified the mitigation project. A number of the locations that are in the town's impact fee system, those improvements were identified. In part because they haven't been done yet. So DOT is approving TNP's historically. People are paying impact fees for. Payne Road and Muzzy. DOT is expecting that to be done. The town hasn't collected enough money to actually make that improvement. So we're required to make that improvement in part because of the impacts, in part because. Improvement hasn't been made yet by the town. So I think there's a direct connection to the required mitigation with the town's impact fee districts because some things haven't been done.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. The other thing that might help you, I had a conversation with Steve Landry, he's the state traffic engineer. He's kind of the top dog in this conversation. The way he said it to me, that made some sense. When they approve a TNP and under conventional sense, I think Dan said at best, a project comes forward and says, here it is, here's the impact. And there's a permit that's based on what that impact is. When the next developer comes in, the assumption is that that improvement that's required with the one that just came before them is made. And so the conversation builds on that. And what happens if those improvements aren't made, it becomes a real challenge and DOT is the one, being the permanent authority. Really trying to reckon with who's responsibility is what. And so the beauty of this is it, in a fairly concise, finite period of time. It gives everyone assurance that this work will get done. Rather than trying to chase and understand who, who did what, when.
And if I can expand on that, it puts that burden on the downs. So we have to get these projects done in the timeframe that we're free to get them done.
Truth be known, these gentlemen would rather pay impact fees, write a check and walk away or. Pay as they go. I mean, I think that would be your preference and I would understand that. So this whole approach, I think, was met with some. Resistance initially and understandably because of the magnitude and, and kind of buying this credit that they can work against. So it's going to make their approvals process hopefully much easier because they're going to have a bank to work against.
We work together and it's best in, in basically cut as good, as good a deal as we feel we can with the DOT. I mean, but we're committed. We have a five year plan that there are things that have to be done in each of those five years. And it's up to us to get them done. And if they don't get done, it's going to be on us. Yeah. So it's, it's a big commitment. The town can kind of come along with us. We work together and we get more bang for the buck, if you will, for the town.
Yeah, the bigger the job, the likelihood we can get it done, less expensive. It's everybody's money.
It's true.
And the other, the other comment I have is when you think about this BPI program in the, in the partnership and the MOU and so on. You know, paying traffic impact fees, you can see what it's done. Nothing. Money's been sitting around in a, in a lot of ways.
I take exception to that, sir. No, we, we did, we, we did Dunston and we've done Higgin's Parkway. So there's examples of us.
There are areas for thirty years.
Yep.
That haven't been addressed because the, the same, it's not, it's not the, the town or the staff's issue. It's the corridor and there wasn't enough funding to deal with what needed to be done with.
Yep.
This is like the unlock mechanism to it. So my point to you is. I think one of the considerations as you look at new platforms going forward after this is in place and we get like this. Major unlocking completed of traffic mitigation. You might look at a different mechanism than traffic impact fees and actually. The citizens of the town can realize the impact from quicker. So it doesn't kind of get locked away. There's something to think about.
I think there's great comfort on our side to tie development and, and responsibility for impact to, to addressing that. And then maybe bringing in a little tighter.
Peter loves to give advice on how to run the government.
I'm going to say some things are very obvious sometimes.
Hold on, Mr. Anderson still has the floor. So I'm going to, we're going to, we're going to bring this back in, John.
I just want just clarity on my question. So if we have one point five million in the current reserve pool. You know, I just want clarity. There aren't other projects that we would want to use that one point five million for, or do we know what those projects are? Because I would just want to make sure if there are other ones, that we're just making sure these are really the, the right ones where we want to apply those funds. They seem like it off of what I understand so far. So I just want to confirm there is not other things.
I think there's been two years of study and our engineers meeting with the Downs team engineers, if not. At time, at times for months at a time, weekly, other times it's every, but there's been a lot of, a lot of time spent in looking. And so I think at this point.
Yeah, I would say what it has helped us do, because this is especially the Payne Road districts are, are aged as they are. And trying to reestablish what those traffic impact fees were based on. What this process has allowed us to do is really look at the analysis when their traffic engineers really diving in to see. What are the real issues out there currently plus moving forward as they increase traffic and, you know, in these already. Failing intersections, to be honest. And so when you look at it that way, I think this has kind of opened our eyes as well to see. And we've worked together, as he said, I've met with the traffic and we were meeting every week at one point. Really kind of diving into that analysis and those study, the study, the numbers. It extends to figure out and prioritize what needs to happen in these districts.
Great. So I just want to say yesterday when I drove to the Downs off of Payne, I was like, this isn't going to work. Long term. So it's good to hear that you guys are thinking about it, especially that musty intersection. When you, when you guys talked a little bit about the five year projections that you were kind of designing this, is it? Just considering what's going to be happening in the downs or is it, was it considering the growth in Scarborough overall?
So the TNP process and, and Tom can jump in here too. Is cumulative. So you, when you do a traffic study, you add in all the other proposed developments. Some of it's happened, some of it hasn't to those numbers. So it adds in other development activity in the project, excuse me, in the town and also in the region. So it's not just the downs.
Yeah. And there's also, if I'm not mistaken, there's also an escalator that DOT puts in and says, looks out in the future and says, hey, in, in the year twenty thirty. Let's add five percent or ten percent of the background traffic. So there. All that, all that is being looked at and considered as part of it.
Definitely you, you apply a background road frame that's based upon, you know. Following for a certain number of years and then adding in that. Those are approved projects and there are a number of those that was added to the study. You know, because of the activities Scarborough was substantial in terms of the background development trips are at. Great.
Payne Road is going to be the first year, so twenty-two. Answer your first question.
All right, that's, that's all I had.
Thank you. Council, last name?
So I think you said around fourteen million overall it was. And so it'd be like a list of projects and then fourteen million. If it goes over, how does that work? Do you have to remove projects out or do you, you have to put more in to finish the project? So do you agree to that list?
We agree to that list.
No matter what?
We agree to that list. So.
So even if the costs go up.
Those are just the cost estimates for the list, the list, once it's, so it's just that it's ultimately going to be the cost of that list, not, that's our estimate. Could be fifteen million.
Yeah, the commitment is to the work.
To the work.
Commitments to the work. Okay. And so are you the only group that's, or the only developer in town that's ever had to do one of these TNP's for Scarborough? Is this?
No, there have been other TNP's issued, but this is the largest, not.
The largest. Okay. It's the biggest one. Okay.
And I, and I wouldn't say that, you know, there's never been any kind of a partnership with the town before. I'm sure so it's, it's gone on, but this is, this is kind of a unique opportunity.
Right.
To leverage the money that you've collected with our money, with state money and really make it impact.
So much work is going into it.
About a billion dollars worth of engineering work in two years.
Yeah, I, I do, I do want to jump in there. We, we have spent over a million today just to get here and have this conversation. I just hope there's a level of appreciation for that because this is major.
So how does it work with, so like another major development like Eastern Village, like they're obviously contributing a lot of. Traffic to Black Point Road, which is another really bad part of town, right? So, so they're not. Participate, they don't participate in this, just traffic impact fees they have or so. So does this, does the state not go? So what about the other major developers?
So yeah, maybe I can, you know, Eastern Village is a good example. They have their own traffic. Movement permit from the DOT that was secured, you know, what, fourteen years ago at this point. And there are mitigation requirements in their project. By and large, they probably did pay impact fees to the, the four main areas, but then they had other offsite. Largely what we see with, with traffic movement projects, they're at a scale that really most of the offsite improvements they make. Are really almost front door improvements. It's a left turn lane to get into the site. You don't, I haven't seen, I don't think anyone's ever seen the scope that we're seeing here with, with, with the Downs project. So I think the. Enterprise Business Park, though I wasn't around when it got approved, I think, you know, they had to do a number of improvements as well as pay traffic impact fees. So. It happens. Rarely that a project does both. I think Cabela's or, yeah, Cabela's is another good example where. They both had to make some improvements, but also have to pay some impact fees. You don't see it too often. And the improvements that they made were at a smaller scale than here, you know, where we're talking about. Completely redoing Muzzy Road and Payne intersection with, you know, that's, that's not just a little bit of geometry. So I hope I'm answering your question.
Yeah, you are. I just was, because this, the ordinance is so old, we define these districts. And I'm just wondering, have we missed opportunities by not? So keeping abreast of that. I mean, obviously you came along and you fell right in the square middle of that district and so you were impacted by it, but. Were there other parts of town that we should have been?
So I do think, you know, that, I, I think that raises a good point. With the Payne Road being, you know, from nineteen ninety. That actually set up these districts that were linear and it didn't necessarily have defined project. Where I think what, you know, Tom referenced earlier how, well, we, we've done things at Dunston and Payne Road. Well, those were more modern ordinances that. Had as part of that ordinance, this is what we're going to build and we knew what that cost estimate was. So I think that, you know, sort of as Peter was alluding to before, as a town moves forward, we need to. Maybe get away from the Payne Road model or just say, hey, we're going to collect money and do something where we actually. Where we actually design what that thing is.
Right.
And build towards that. So I think that's.
It's just the horse, you know, the cart behind the horse, but it's innovative when you look at it, like what's come out of this is quite innovative with these projects that you're coming up with. And then this is what the town can do. This is what, but it does kind of feel like maybe we've lost some opportunity. You know, for some of these other big developments that are really impacting other, other parts of town, but.
Yeah, I was just going to also add that one of the other differences is we work with the town on a five to ten year TNP. That's, that's really uncommon. Typically it's, I'm going to be able to build Cabela's, it generates, you know, five hundred trips. I know what the improvements are. Cabela's pays for it. It happens. So. That's also the scope of the improvements is kind of the life of the permit. So I think that's important for the kind of town to understand because we could have. Come one at a time and be piecemeal, but it wouldn't have resulted in this partnership opportunity in fixing town issues, DOT issues and ours. So.
I don't know.
It's kind of a catch twenty-two. It's a benefit, but it's also.
Yeah. So like to have that communicated out through some channels, maybe a simpler, I mean, not that this wasn't simple, but fewer bullet points, I guess. You know, that people can understand like what this is and looks like because traffic is, is a huge concern and, you know. Here's, like you say, a five to ten year approach. Now. Things could happen. Maybe it doesn't work the way you're saying, but you've made this really good point about the scorecard. Because you can't always predict the future, but as this happens, this happens, there's built in mechanisms to kind of do that. So I do think that the communication out about what this is to the general public would be of great value should the MOU go forward. Because it seems very innovative to me.
Yeah, I think we, we've put together a plan of what we, you know, the engineers have said, this is what you need to do to accommodate this much traffic. And so we're going to make those improvements. We get to put this much traffic in and then there'll be another bite at the apple. This. These trips are going to be, you know, that should take care of us for a significant portion of the project, but it's probably not the whole, it's not all of it. So there's going to be another bite at the apple at some point in time, but we've come up with a plan that. Seems like it would be manageable and it seems like it would make sense rather than come in like Dan said, piecemeal. Oh, we have a user and we know it's this many trips and we need to go, you know, make a lane on Payne Road. And then next year we have another user and oh, now we need something else on Payne Road. We're back in Payne Road again. It's, let's, let's figure out what we think we need for the near future and make those improvements and then go for it.
And honestly, like, like you said, Dan, like especially at North Scarborough, I mean, now you're impacting the whole region. And Payne Road going to South Portland, it's, it's not just Scarborough residents. It's going to be people coming down. And Payne Road going to South Portland, it's, it's not just Scarborough residents, it's gonna be people coming down to. You know, so it seems like a, a great approach and just, it's clear how much work, how much work is, but I'd always hear about those meetings and occasionally step in for a minute or listen at the door and I was like, oh wow, that's a lot of work. Yeah. But, yeah.
I'd do the same thing.
That's good. Do you have anything?
Yeah, um, so there's some really great improvements here. This is, you know, a lot of work that's gone into it and I've heard about the, the famous meetings for hours on end as well. I'm, I'm happy that I didn't participate in any of them. You technically, I understand the need for an MOU. It might be more complicated, it could be complicated. So I, I guess a couple of questions might help to clarify. So where we've made improvements already, like in Dunston and Hagus intersection, are, are they paying impact fees to, to reimburse us? For these other areas where we have defined impact fees, are they gonna, are we gonna waive the fee because they're making the improvement or how's that?
So in the Payne Road ordinance, the planning board is, has the authority to allow construction in lieu of payment. And so that is a discussion that we need to now have with the planning board moving forward and, and you know, talk about that role. So there is still another discussion to be had with, with, that's their review authority in the ordinance. Today, we, really the, the TM, this traffic movement permit and the reason we're here tonight has really come together two years, sort of funneled together really quick and we're almost to the, the final, you know, it sounds like DOT is really close to signing the permit. So we're, we're starting after this meeting, we're gonna try to pull together the planning board to have that discussion around. Okay, this is all the work that's gone into it. Here's staff's recommendation that we move forward with construction in lieu of payment and ultimately the planning board will have to take that action. Or the action they see fit, I should say.
And then the other, on the other side of that, let's say a big user comes in on the other side of Payne Road. Typically, we'd have them pay the impact fee to the town to reimburse us for the improvements that were made. Since the Downs is making the improvements, what happens to that money or do we even still have the impact?
So I think that's something that we need to work our way through. I think we are gonna need some legal advice on how we sort of wind up closing out ordinances and, or we're modifying them as we look at new areas. So that's gonna take a little bit of time. One thing I've thought about and, you know, this is gonna be some of the mechanics that we need to sit around the table with Tom and, and the Downs team to talk about is but certainly, you know, as they said, in the next three years, we may see most improvements. We'll probably see some funds trickle in in the next three years, right? We're a busy town. You know, what, what's gonna happen with those funds that do come in, right? Because really they're, they're targeted for these improvements. And so is it, you know, do we talk, we need to talk about that. I don't want to.
And, and, and to John's, we did, seriously, all's we're trying to avoid is painted twice. That's it, it's, you know.
So that's a key point of, of the MOU is we're gonna get absolved or.
Yeah.
From these.
Uh, I, I think I'm gonna ask the same thing for the third time, but do we have like, so we have a Payne Road Zone Three. Do we have a Payne Road Zone Three traffic improvement account?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that might help a little bit. So there is a designated, so
So those.
There are many different reserve accounts.
Yes.
That are very specific. So, so to John's, I, I'm re-asking your question, John and Ken, but I think I'm trying to get to the same point. So when we look at Payne Road Zone Three, there's an account assigned to Payne Road Zone Three.
Yep.
Okay, so.
We've segregated those accounts.
So when, okay, so when there's the question, is there other priorities? Well, there's an account that can only go to Payne Road Zone Three.
In that slide that I had spelled out.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I, I just felt like people were trying to get to that and we didn't quite get there, so.
I think you're right.
Yeah, right, right. But I think it's, well, I think it's important to understand, even if there was some intersection that we wish we could spend two million on, we can only spend Payne Road Zone Four money on Payne Roads. And so that's to Betsy's point, wholeheartedly agree, this is, this should be something that is probably celebrated. So it's important the way that we communicate it out to people, right? Because there's seven of us, I, we just need to make it clear. That was it, because I think that, that eliminated my follow-up question. So that's all I have. Does anybody want the floor back?
I just want to ask one clarifying point. Dan, in your presentation, you showed what you call the front doors, in particular Route One, Holmes Road and what will be Center Street, I think you called it, on the highest parkway?
Yes.
Those are all improvements that are not part of this TNP. Is that correct?
They're part, they're all part of the TNP, yeah.
Are they in that fourteen million?
Yes.
They are, okay. I just want to be clear on that point.
Yep.
I just have.
Yeah, absolutely.
One comments, recommendation, and it's probably already on your guys' radar, but are you gonna be talking about this with the downtown development committee at all, just to kind of help them understand how this, this particular plan is gonna be critical as an enabler to kind of get the downtown we want? So that could be included in their recommendation to the council. So I think like we talked about yesterday, there are some needs for the, the, the committee to identify things that the council might need to consider in order to enable the downtown that's being painted. And it was a great meeting yesterday where you guys showed it, but I think that's kind of the next step is what are the things the council needs to consider to help enable what that team is gonna be recommending? And I think this is probably
Yeah, I'm sorry.
One of those things.
On that point, we, we did invite planning board members and transportation committee members. We made them aware of this meeting. I see a couple of them are here in the audience. Some others may be watching, you know, really just to get, as you said, there's a number. There's a number of folks in town that have other, you know, responsibilities in, in this, at play here. So really this is a great opportunity to start that conversation now that we have something to present and it's, it is becoming very clear.
And as you know, we've talked about with transportation group, so we're really talking about dovetailing that in with the planning board workshops. Because that group will be kind of the eyes on this as well, how that moves forward. Kind of helping along with that process. I think that might give the council some comfort with that as well, so. I do have a logistical question. So the scorecard, so how literally is that counted and marked? Somebody, you run over a cord that does a card, axle count or laser pointers?
Sorry, it's based on the number of trips for each use is based on the ITE manual. And Tom can explain the ITE manual, but it's a, you know, a single family home.
Count, right? So what's it?
No, it's based on, it's based on, Tom, why don't you explain it?
So, so traffic engineers have the publication, the IT Trip Generation Manual. And so it's a big publication based upon research on developments throughout the country that basically tells us how many vehicles are generated from different land use categories for projects. And it's approved by DOT counties. And so your, we'll work with your consultant, traffic peer review consultant, and we'll come up with, and as each time a site plan application comes before the town, we fill in the scorecard to say, to keep track and reduce the, the trips that have been permitted from, you know, you know, you know, from that estimate. Just keep, keep track.
So essentially they start with three thousand and they work down from there, right? First project takes forty five, next one takes, right?
You know, we can, we get some condominiums approved, that's this many trips. We get a, you know, a commercial building approved and it's this type of use and it's that many trips. We just keep.
And it's created by engineers, so it's highly conservative. You never actually generate the traffic it says. So if you're worried about that, it's gonna be.
Says a planner.
Well, I guess my question is back to the town and, you know, how are we going to prove out that this is?
Yep, so as part of the mechanics says, was just it, every application comes with that scorecard? Are with every application we send out to our traffic peer reviewers, so we have, we have folks on our team that this is what they do. They look at that scorecard and will say, no, we don't like that number or yes, that number works fine. And there's a lot of back and forth that happens. And once that number's agreed to, Jamelle in my office, the assistant planner, tracks that and he has that scorecard ready to pull out at any moment to say, where are we against the three thousand? And within a few moments, he can say, yep, we're at five hundred.
So how do you look? Because I know I've heard you guys talk about like, you, like, how, so the traffic system you put in at Dunston, how's that working? And you made some adjustments to it because there were some things that weren't quite working with it. So how do you, how do you determine when you need to make adjustments on these smart systems? And how are you measuring once you're in, in action, everything is live, you've done all the work, you've had all the planning scorecard? What, what does the town do then?
So if you're talking about just the adaptive traffic signal system in general?
It looks like a lot of this plan is dependent on this, right? So we're not making a ton of road improvements.
Right, right.
So we're highly banking on this. So how, how are we gonna monitor that once it's up and running?
Right, so with each improvement too, and as these traffic signals are upgraded, there is some back and forth again with the, their design engineers as well as our peer reviewers that would be out in the field to make sure it's, it's kind of working. Also, we have a maintenance sort of contract, I guess you'd call it, with rhythm engineering is the adaptive traffic signal we, system we use in Dunston, which is what we're gonna be rolling out to be consistent throughout the town. So there have been extremely responsive with all of those little things. When we get calls or complaints or we can actually see them live in real time from Public Works to say, okay, this isn't working and why? And we can really, literally pick up the phone and be able to adjust those things from Kansas, right? So I think there is some back and forth about just getting the system off and running, which would be their traffic engineer, Tom and Goral Palmer, to try and working with our peer reviewers to get that going. But long term, we also have a system.
Counselor Gleystein, we actually track, read metrics that track the optimization so we can tell you what percent improvement we've seen at Dunston. And then I can give you my personal anecdotal experience because I go through there four times a day. But then I can't quote them off the top of my head, but it was in the order of twenty, twenty percent.
Twenty-four percent they were showing, yeah, for reducing delays through that intersection.
So I would expect we would generate similar metrics as we roll out this technology elsewhere.
So it's good to get, yeah, that background information first, that the data collecting of what they collect that or what happens with that corridor before and after.
Yeah, I, I drive that intersection every day, so I'm just, you know, add to the qualitative responses there. So it does seem vastly improved. And I think that's the same method we're gonna use at Oak Hill. So I mean, those things really do work, so.
The, the most notable improvement is, and it maybe it's just my pet peeve, but I hate sitting in a traffic light. You know, particularly when all four intersections or approaches are stopped looking at each other. The one thing that you'll see just going through Dunston is, is responsive. They will adjust to what is coming at it and it's, it's remarkably responsive.
I think, I think I'm concerned, why are you making four trips a day? One to the office, one back?
I go home to lunch every day, so. It's actually six times through, if you want to be accurate.
After an hour and a half, I get pretty useless.
So they're gonna make, just for clarity, they're gonna make the improvements, but we all know, right? So the Public Works will see what's happening in all of these two intersections as well. And if it breaks, we'll be on.
And I will say, we've been finding those conversations with DOT, we've been at the table. So really through the town has been specifying what equipment we want, like to the point of, we did our research ahead of time in selecting the adaptive traffic signal we did. And now we are all in and, but, and seeing the results that we want to be consistent through the town. And so we're actually been specifying what we want for equipment and it's getting in through the DOT and into their TNP.
The one exception, and it's a little off topic, but Exit Forty Two, I believe MTA showed a very keen interest in actually taking over ownership and operation, given the fact that queuing from their traffic coming off the turnpike being stopped at that first light is backing up through the toll and up to the ramp. So am I correct in saying that Angela, that they're interested in assuming ownership?
They do have ownership of that intersection.
But that was fairly recent.
It was recent, yes.
Yeah, and we were pleased to give it to them. They've got the maintenance responsibility.
And then I guess the other thing is looking forward, this is great, it's a nice summary. I understand there's another level down that has, you know, more specific layers as part of the, it'd be good to make that public because when, at some point, we're gonna have to authorize the use of funds. We're gonna have to make sure that they relate to the projects or that they reflect before us and just be good to be able to tie those together.
Yeah, I, I, next order of business, I gotta work with Allison and come up with a whole communications plan because I, I think there's a great story to tell and a lot of detail to synthesize and convey, but there's also a long-term education. You know, these improvements are sustained over a five-year period. So ideally we coordinate and are thoughtful when and where we do these improvements, but there's gonna be a lasting impact that people see. And I think the sooner we talk about that to prepare people what's coming at them, the better.
I think I'd, I'd add that, you know, there's a level of detail there, but we don't have actual detailed plans for every single thing that's gonna get done. We've got plans that are correct if they're wrong. They're, they're pretty close. They're generally what's gonna get done. That's what these descriptions are. But as we move to those projects, the year before we're gonna do that project, we actually get into, you know, build documents. And that's when we're gonna continue to work with the town, work with DOT. And, you know, our plan might have said, you know, the, the, the lane is gonna be thirty-seven feet long and we've realized, you know, it needs to be forty-one. All those, those are gonna get changed in detail. So there'll be, you've got a level of detail now, but it's not super deep, but that will come as, as each project.
I, I don't think the council would need the final build plans. I, I think it, we just need to be able to say that they're gonna be used for the purpose that they're collecting.
You're appropriating funds, essentially. That's what we're, we're, we think we're asking for.
And I think once, as the, as the, once the DOT does finalize that permit, now we know what the, that five-year schedule is, that be great information for, for not only share with council, but for, for members of the public so they can know. It, it's spelled out. These guys are on the hook for it, sort of regardless of what happens.
There's a significant amount of work that's gonna get done over the first three years. And frankly, it'll be a little unpleasant around the Downs for, for a little while. But, you know, once we get that work, particularly Payne Road, and there's a lot of work that's gonna get done there. Once we get that done, we get it all done one shot. You know, it's not us doing some, the town do some. We do it all one shot. We all go through the pain of getting it done. And then when it's done.
Drop the Y.
It's gonna be a lot safer.
Hey, I'm excited about Route One. You know, there's some changes here that have been studied for years and years. It's gonna make an, an impact.
Talk to I think. Anticipate that there's any of these projects, because I'm thinking back to the, you know, we put the, we closed the road going up to Dunston Corner and there was a, a big outcry by, you know, the Hillary Farm and, you know, how that all worked out and the town worked together to come up with a different plan that, that actually got executed. Do you anticipate any controversy on any of the ones that you're, that you're looking at that, you know, that residents might have good ideas that they want to share and say, wait, if you do this, it's gonna work better? Or, I mean, I know there's been two years of work, so I'm just wondering, you know, and will they have a chance to weigh in that planning board or how does that work? Because I, I think that, I think I'm, I'm not, maybe not saying that one correctly, but I believe there was a general consensus that that ultimately worked better with public feedback, the way that that whole three light thing worked. Maybe that was one of your, maybe you were still there at the end, but.
I can anticipate the Muzzy Road, Payne Road will be of some interest just because it's gonna be brand new. It's a brand new intersection. I anticipate most of the other ones are really kind of improvements with extra turn lanes and those sorts of things. So the average resident probably won't have much of an opinion. The experience won't be that different. Having said that, the Oak Hill improvements are likely to be the most challenging for us because these are really focusing on safety improvements. They'll be very, you know, raised islands, they'll be.
Yeah, raised islands on Black Point.
Uh, I don't, I can't say that. I don't believe so, but I, I think historically that has been an area that a lot of people have opinions about. So I think we'll be wise to be thoughtful about how we roll that out. I don't think we have much opportunity for changing what the improvements are, frankly. They're really being directed by DOT, very specifically.
Yeah, and I think Tom, that Oak Hill's a, just a good example of sort of the collaboration that's happened with, with DOT because that, that's one of our busiest intersections, we all know, but it's also one of the, the, our high crash locations. And so DOT was looking at using, you've probably seen him in other communities, sort of these plastic tubular materials down Black Point Road. And that was gonna be what the traffic was intended to, to enhance safety. It being Oak Hill in the center of town, you know, we sort of looked at that and said, oh my goodness, we can't have plastic tubes that are gonna get knocked over and be broken all the time. And so now the plans sort of morphed to more what we see at, say, Higas in, in Route One, you know, where you have the, the sort of low curbs something a little bit more attractive, but still does the same safety parameters. But as Tom said, there's. Something a little bit more attractive, but still does the same safety parameters, but as Tom said, there's, you know, D O T. Has said, this is a safety issue, you, you, you've got to, you've got to make some improvements here. And so we were able to at least move it to something a little bit more tenable to, what we think is more tenable to the residents. But, but certainly, so anyway, that's just an example.
Alright, it's eight o'clock, so I think, I think we're gonna wrap it up. Anytime you get a group of people that have spent hundreds of hours on one thing, another group of people that have been spending lots of hours on something completely different, we ran the risk of probably everything going haywire. Thank everybody in the room for very productive, respectful conversation, and with that, we will see everybody in a couple of weeks, actually, we'll see us back next Wednesday.